Good evening. Thank you to all of you here in the chamber for joining us and those at home that are watching remotely. We appreciate you taking time to visit with us tonight for tonight's monthly business meeting, July 5th, 2016. Those of you who are with us tonight, if you have electronic devices, please turn them off or to silent. And we will have several opportunities tonight. There'll actually be four opportunities for citizen input, and I'll let you know as each of those opportunities become available. And our public comments are limited to three minutes. There's a light on Ms. Bratton's desk here. It will turn green as you start, and it will become yellow when you have 30 seconds left, so please try to have your comments finished before that light turns off. Ask that you'll all be respectful of speakers. Please let's not have any cheering or jeering or demonstrations. Their agenda's on the table to the right as you leave the door. For those of you who are here tonight, if you'd like to follow on, follow along with us from home, you can access an agenda from athensclarkcounty.com. Ms. Bratton, would you call the roll for us, please?
Dickerson?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Wright?
Present.
Bailey?
Present.
Neesmith?
Present.
Vale?
Here.
Harrod?
Present.
Burks?
Hamby?
Here.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for the approval of minutes for June 21st?
So move.
Second.
Motion second, Mr.?
I'd like to make, suggest a small amendment, please. There are several places in the minutes where the word "dump" is mentioned, and I think that should be more appropriately referred to as the landfill, since it is a state-of-the-art facility.
Absolutely.
And it is not a dump.
Thank you.
So I would like to make that as a motion to correct the minutes.
That's all, fine.
Sir?
So, and it's fine with them?
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion, second, for the amended minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Do we have any written communications, Ms. Bratton? Okay. This is the time that we have public comment on our consent agenda, and those are, tonight are items 1, 8, and 10. I've removed item 9 already because we're gonna have some discussion on that, and that will be the first item that we will discuss when we go to the next part of our agenda. Anyone that wants to speak to 1, 8, or 10? This would be the, 1 through 8 or 10, this would be the time to come to the podium and give us your name and address, and let us know what you're speaking to. Okay. Seeing none, we'll come behind the rail. Would any commissioner like?
Madam Mayor, may I move for adoption of the consent agenda items 1 through 8 and 10?
Thank you.
The ordinances that need to be read.
Well, listen, would you comment for us first, because there's one Mr. Williams needs to give us some clarification on?
Thank you, Mayor. There is a correction that we were given by public work staff as it relates to item number 10, the live stream pipe emergency repair and relocation. The property consistently referred to throughout the agenda item as what's known as the Baxter Street Car Wash was erroneously assigned 1078 Baxter Street, and I'd like the record to reflect that the actual address of that property is 1064.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Would you read the ordinances for 1 and 2, Mr. Bearman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bearman. 2. The first is an ordinance to levy and assess taxes for the Clark County Board of Education for the Clark County School District, Athens, Clark County, Georgia, for the year 2016. Second is an ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia with respect to the establishment of a loading zone at 755 East Broad Street and for other purposes. That's all.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question about item number 10, or do I need to pull it off the consent agenda to do that?
Go ahead and ask a question. We may need to move it if it's a lot of discussion.
So, in the agenda report, under Facts and Issues, number 6, says that there was a nonresponsiveness from the property owners. Could you clarify what that means, please?
Well, as the 10 item points out, we did meet them out on-site with their attorney and our attorney, and disagreed on the ownership of the pipe. And we did make an offer to them on how to settle this as quickly and expeditiously as possible, and Attorney Barryman made multiple attempts at contact and spoke briefly with their attorney on several occasions, but they never responded to that offer. Did I mischaracterize that, Bill?
No, that's correct. Apparently, they are just taking the position they're not gonna do anything, or they don't have the resources to do anything.
So does that make it more expensive for us, because they're not willing to do what they, what we think they should be willing to do?
Well, and what, well, of course, I mean, ideally, they would own the project and do their repairs, and we would do the repairs that are proposed here, but that's something that we want to discuss with you further.
It could be a legal issue, yes, so.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Neesmith?
So, I mean, I was there at one of the last rain events. I dropped by there, and the water was two feet below the top, and within three minutes, quite literally, it was overflowing and flooding into the streets and into the, into the parking lots. And so, so I know that one of the plans was for that pipe to be fixed so that we didn't have that problem, and if it isn't fixed, then we'll continue to have that problem until we finish our project, which is gonna take a long time. That seems, that seems bad. Seems unreasonable.
We have a solution that we're gonna bring forth.
Very good.
Great, okay. Do you want to take it off? Are you, are you okay? Is there any further thing you need tonight?
I'm okay, I guess.
Okay. Okay, and?
If there's a solution forthcoming.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, did we have a motion?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Yes, we do.
All in favor of those items?
Second, Mr. Bailey.
Okay. Okay, the items that are on the consent agenda, which we removed item number 9 from. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. This is the second opportunity now for citizen input, and this is on items number 9 through 11, 9 and 11 through 13, and 15 through 16. Item number 14 has been removed from the agenda tonight. So anyone that would like to speak to those, this would be the time to come to the podium and give us your name and address, and let us know which one you're speaking to.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, good evening. My name's Gary Hedrick. My address is 1,005 Lavender Road, and I'm speaking specifically to Old Business, item 15, Rails to Trails Network Program. I spoke to the agenda setting session, I believe that's the correct name for it.
Yes.
And those comments that I made at that time are all, absolutely still continue to be true. What a beneficial project for our greater community. I'd like to add one thing to that comment. Since that time, the organization that I represent, Firefly Trail Incorporated, has formalized our support into a resolution that I have sent to each one of you, and you've seen that. And I wanted to mention that and affirm that resolution even again tonight, and our concern that this project moved forward, and we offer whatever help we can, as that is able to occur pending your action tonight. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Hedrick. Anyone else wish to speak to any of those items?
Madam Mayor, Commission, I'm Mark Ralston. I live at 190 Pendleton Drive here in Athens. I'm Vice President of the Firefly Trail Incorporated, but tonight I'm here speaking on my own behalf just to thank you very much for your consideration of the Firefly Trail and for making this tremendous asset a reality in our community. I think it's important for safety, for economic development, for the health and fitness of our citizens, and I really appreciate all you are doing to make it happen.
Thank you, Mr. Ralston.
Good evening. My name is Nat Kirkendall. I live at 108 River Bottom Circle in Athens, and I'm here tonight as Vice Chair of the Greenway Commission, and just want to speak in favor of the amendments that Commissioner Jerry Neesmith has put together for the study of connectors to Barnett Shoals Road and the future Greenway in the Horseshoe Bend area. We think this language that's been proposed here is appropriate and would meet the direction from the Greenway Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkendall.
Tyler Dewey, Executive Director for Bike Athens, 1075 West Broad Street. I'll be quick tonight, and I just wanted to support that Firefly Trail's comments and their resolution. As Bike Athens, we agree with their position. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to items 9, 11 through 13, and 15 and 16? Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rail. We'll start with item number 9, and, Ms. Neesmith?
Yes. As you can tell, it's been a hard week, but number 9, the connectors for Splos Project, 2011 Project Number 9, I've gotten a lot of opinions and a lot of help, and last but not least, Blaine and Derrick took my commission defined option and recrafted it a bit to what I think is actually a better worded option and achieves both their goals and the goals that I have, which were, in a nutshell, since Project Number 6, which is the Carr Creek option, is along a sewer line, and Project Number 4 is along a sewer line, I thought that we should put that, them in an equal status as far as instructing the staff to, to work with public utilities and public utilities to work with property owners to obtain the right of ways and so forth for the, for the Greenway projects as well as for both of those sewer projects. And so I believe that, would you agree that this captures that, Blaine?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, so do I. So that's why this commission defined option is before you. You can read it if you want. I don't need to unless you want me to, but with that, I'll make a motion that we adopt a commission defined option that begins with subject purpose and in the CDO.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it with comments due to, want to be clear, since this is, this is a different commission defined option that was handed out today than what's in the packet that I had already expressed that I was not in support of, so I appreciate the additional work that's been done, which is gonna keep 4, 5, and 6 subprojects moving forward for this incredible connectivity to a very densely populated area. There are communities over here, residential communities, hundreds of beds, over 3,000 beds between the, each side of Barnett Shoals that can get roads off, vehicles off the road by the connectivity to campus that these are gonna bring, and I'm excited about them moving forward, and do support the newest commission defined option for 9 that was presented tonight.
Okay. Do you have any further comment, any comment before we call question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to item number 11, which is a proposal to allow for the sale of growlers in brew pubs, and I believe that you wanted to speak to that, Mr.?
Yes, ma'am. I talked with the attorney over the week. You know, I had some, some issues with some of the wording, and I also, in the midst of this, actually talked to a merchant, and he had, he had an interesting point that also we had not quite covered, which had to do with the requirement that a brew pub sell 50% of its sales were food and the other, up to 50% alcohol, and what, what a growler would do to that, selling growlers would do to that, to that situation, which potentially would be that the growler sales could cause their alcohol sales to be in excess of 50%, even though it's consumed offsite. Bill pointed out that actually state code takes care of that, but he also agreed to put that information into our ordinance, so anyone who reads it would understand that nuance. The other change was simply removing some, some words about drinking growlers on the premises and just saying, "We don't need to address that. We already say you can." So that's, that's, those are the two changes in this commission defined option, and I'd like to move for acceptance.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, would you read the ordinance, Mr. Bearman?
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia with respect to the sale of growlers in brew pubs and for other purposes.
Mr. Harrod, you want to speak with this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I intend to support this, but I do have a question. So, it specifically mentions malted beverages, which primarily we're talking about beer. What about hard cider? That's not a malted beverage, but it is an alcoholic beverage, and I could imagine that at some point in the future, there may be a, an institution, an establishment that wishes to sell, to brew and sell hard cider.
I don't know if the definition of beer will cover hard cider or not. I just, I don't know that.
I suspect it would not, because beer is a malted beverage, mostly made from barley, and?
I don't know if the state, you know, we're, this is a derivative of the state law, and I'm not sure the state law would cover the hard cider either. I'd have to go back and look at the state law definitions to see if it's encompassed within beer, brew pubs, which then would allow the local government to adopt the brew pub ordinance.
So, if I'm understanding you correctly, if the state ordinance allows, would, would cover cider, hard cider, then if we passed this option in front of us, as is, our local ordinance would cover that, and if the state ordinance does not include hard cider as a quote-unquote malted beverage, which I would be surprised if it did, then we can't include that anyway. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, but I'm not positive that, that the county definition completely squares with the definition, the state definitions of beer and malt beverages. It could, but I'm just not prepared to say that right now without doing some research.
I would like to say, cover hard cider if possible.
Well, would you want to hold it and allow me a month to do some, some research? Because I, I'm very hesitant to say go ahead and do it, because I just don't know what effects that might have with a brew pub that tried to do it and then realized there was a problem with state law.
I don't know what my colleagues would be willing to do. I would like to have a clarification on that question, but if I'm the only one, then, as I say, I'm fully supportive of what we're doing here. I just want to make sure that we don't, that we are as inclusive, rather than having to come back and fix something later on.
Well, in Kelly's, in Kelly's absence as being the Chair of the Legislative Review, I am looking at, if it's page 56 in our packet, it talks about brew pub, and if this is, the definition of brew pub is helping clarify that the cider is not, they're talking about the brew pub being an eating establishment in which beer or malt beverages are manufactured or brewed. So it could be that cider is already left out by virtue of that definition, and it didn't come up in committee. Of course, neither did the part about the cell of it clarifying that either, so it could be something we missed, or it could be because that sort of defines it there. I don't know if that helps.
Ms. Neesmith?
I don't think the demand right now, there's no one making hard cider to put into growlers. I guess those would be cider growlers. So I'm not sure that there's, you know, an urgency to accommodate that, but I certainly agree with Andy that we need to clarify it and address it. Perhaps we could do that at a later time.
And that's fine. I don't want to, as I say, I mean, I'm fully supportive of this, but as I was thinking, and not to suggest that I spend a lot of time around beer or hard cider, but, but hard cider is not a malted beverage, but it is an alcoholic beverage.
Sorry, while y'all were talking, I just did a real quick Google search, and the rules do say, and I'm trying to find, I found it when it popped up, that it is considered a malt beverage. Give me one second. Y'all can talk for a second. It just said, Georgia provisions under Chapter 560-22. Hang on. It's kind of small, so give me a second. I'm trying to find it. But it did, and I don't have a problem. Here it is. Hard cider is defined by the app means an alcoholic beverage obtained by fermentation of juice of apples. For the purposes of this regulation, hard cider shall be deemed a malt beverage. The term does not include sweet cider.
Okay.
So it's on page, it's 5, Chapter 560-22, and I can forward that. It's on page 3 of the provision, so.
Isn't the internet wonderful?
Good job.
Correct.
So I wasn't emailing anybody.
Just think there's something right for once.
So y'all read the vote?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, great, we got that clarified tonight. Thank you, Ms. Dickerson. Item number 12 is our Downtown Development Authority, a community events program, and Ms. Wright, I mean, Ms. Link, you had, had asked that it be off the consent agenda, so?
I move that we go ahead and adopt this.
I just wanted to, I was able to read it during the agenda setting meeting, just for the public's purpose of knowing what was on this, so I move we adopt it.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number 13 is our Solid Waste Landfill on Call Professional Services Contract. Have a motion, discussion?
I move we adopt this as well.
Have a motion, do we have?
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Man, we're gonna get out of here tonight. Okay. So we are now to make sure I hadn't missed anything. Item number 15, which is our Rails to Trails Network Program, and we have a, let me make sure. Ms. Link, I think you want, you had a commission defined option?
Before I start, there's been a lot of back and forth about this item over the past couple of weeks, and a few concerns, and I have a couple of questions for the manager regarding Subproject 3 and the length of it. I know there's been some confusion about the original intent of the Splos Project ending at Winterville, yet the map shows it going through Winterville. I don't have any problem whatsoever with this trail going all the way through Winterville. I think that's completely and totally appropriate. I'm just curious as to why the Winterville leg isn't being designated a separate project so it can move forward on its own without waiting for all these land acquisitions along the way.
Well, to answer that specific question, that's certainly possible, and it may even be desired by Winterville, but again, I think process is very important, and I think it would be helpful to have the Rails to Trails Committee endorse that recommendation and move it forward so that we're all on the same page, and that could certainly happen in the next cycle, if that's something that the Rails to Trails Committee wanted to take up. The reason, and you bring up a great point, the reason why we, the staff has worded it that way is we absolutely want to clarify. There has been some ambiguous language, and when you go back and look at the original project request, you know, there's, there's cases where it says to the city limits of Winterville, there's cases where it says the entire, you know, the radius of, of the one and a half miles that comprises the diameter of Winterville, and so we just want to go on the record for saying for sure that that is what the mayor and commission desire, so there's no ambiguity, and that's why it's worded that way.
Okay. There's also been some concern that by going ahead and designating these funds for this land acquisition, we could be pulling money from designated funds for the future rebuilding of the Trail Creek Bridge or the trestle. Could you address that and address publicly the, the issues regarding moving forward with the sub-project before any progress on the trestle?
Certainly. And from, from my reading of the original project request and how that evolved, you know, the trestle was not made a part of this current project, which is coming forth to you in this next cycle, which goes from East Broad to Old Winterville Road. It does involve, however, bridges across the North Oconee River, as well as Peter Stream, and the trestle was intentionally left out of that project because of the complications surrounding the condition of the structure itself, as well as federal guidelines that relate to historic preservation. And all of this was done in plain conversation, very transparent, with the F8, the Federal Highway Administration, and the Georgia Department of Transportation officials, and what was agreed upon was that in order to have the project move forward, that the trestle should become, at a later date, revisited, and that is something that I think is consistent throughout the documentation, that there is an intent to revisit the trestle at some point in the future, but only after this current project that's coming forth for construction award is complete and closed out, to have clear separation between the two projects. Now, and I'll, I'll share a little math with you, and I know Commissioner Neesmith had asked earlier about some extra funds that are there, and so let me share with you what we have. The project that's coming to you is $5.6 million, and that project sources consist of $5.3 million of 2011 money for those purpose Rails to Trails, and the $300,000 for 2005. Okay? So if you'll follow me here, there's $7.5 million overall in the 2011 project. So we've taken 5.3 out. Another $540,000, as your agenda item states, is allocated for the land acquisition with respect to project, Subproject Number 2, or B as it was formerly known. 531,000 of additional funds are slated as contingency for the $5.6 million project. We may not use all that, but we always go in with a 10% construction contingency to make sure we can cover that. An additional $800,000 has been spent on design, on environmental studies, on testing and inspections that have yet to happen, and so that is part of the project as well, which leaves you a remainder of $250,000. I don't remember where, but in our conversations, some years ago, it was stated that $100,000 would be used for the purposes of land acquisition for this project between Athens and Winterville. And we're adding to that another $150,000, which is the remaining funds in the project to go ahead and put forth towards those purposes. So, Commissioner Link, yes, you could, you could argue that that $150,000 is, is being used for the, the land acquisition and not the trestle, but again, staff would caution going forward with formalizing that process at this point. Now, if there are contingency funds left over from the project, and this project will be complete in about a year, the mayor and commission could designate those funds for those purposes if they desire at that point. Secondly, if the mayor and commission want to use some leftover funds from the 2011 other projects towards those purposes, they can do that at that time. And then certainly, the project in its totality, which includes the trestle and the build-out to the extent of, of the city of Winterville, is going to need more funds to augment it in order to make it a reality, which would make it a candidate for a T-Splos or Splos project.
So, I'm looking at the map for Subproject 3, which is the longest leg of the trail, especially once it goes through Winterville. Do you have any idea how long the length is to Winterville, and then how long the length is through Winterville?
I can tell you that it's a mile and a half is within the city limits of Winterville, and it's about six miles from the, our projected end and terminus, you know, from where our build-out now to the city limits. So I think it's about 7 and 1/2 miles.
7 and 1/2 miles total?
Total.
And then just a mile and a half of that is Winterville?
That's correct.
Okay. I did have a conversation with Mayor Dodd-Ferrell, and we talked about the implications of, you know, having that Winterville leg as part of this project and dependent on this whole length, this whole seven-mile length, and it seems like Winterville's pretty ready to, to move forward fairly quickly, at least with their in-town portion, and the fear is that, you know, if, if we have problems with the land acquisition further up the trail, it could hinder them getting their trail done, which could serve a lot of function and a little in-town connectivity. He's even, you know, there was even mentioned that they could find some safe routes to school money, possibly. So I, I'd like to move that we tabled this, this item, or at least tabled the, any decision on Subproject 3 to allow the Rail Trail Committee to take a new look at it and, and bring Mayor Ferrell in there and discuss possibly designating it a separate project, whether it's a Subproject 4 or a Subproject 3A, just to give them some autonomy and a little bit more control over how that, the trail proceeds through Winterville, and, you know, they, they might be able to get ahead of the rest of the trail a little bit and, and have a functional route through their town. And I know that we'll be seeing Subproject 1, the funding for, or the bids for that come forward soon, so I hope that as part of that, we can start initiating a conversation about how we're gonna move forward on the trestle. There's a whole lot of emotion wrapped up in that. I was working for Flagpole when that trestle first started coming down, and it was a firestorm. There's a lot of history, a lot of cultural context, environmental issues, engineering issues. It's a really emotional issue, and I hope that, you know, as we address the route around the trestle and through Dudley Park, we can start to initiate a public conversation about how and when we're gonna start building that trestle, and I want to insist that it's a completely transparent and public and inclusive process that includes representatives of multiple stakeholders, because we're gonna have to have some delicate conversations with the community about the fate of that structure. So, I mean, I'd like to move that we go ahead and table Subproject 3 just, just for a month, and allow staff and, and the Rail Trail Committee and, and representatives of Winterville the opportunity to change the language a little bit and allow that, that Winterville leg some autonomy. I say we go ahead and adopt that agreement with, with Firefly Trail. I think that's a great thing, that, that we're bringing Firefly Trail Inc. and the land trust into this land acquisition process, and hopefully when we do see some issues related to Subproject 1, we can initiate that conversation about the trestle, so.
Ms. Link, I didn't want to cut you off, because we have five minutes each, each discussion, and you had?
and you had, and I think this discussion with Mr. Williams was really good to educate the rest of us. I want to make sure that I'm not misstating anything, because we had a meeting this afternoon that Mayor Farrell was a part of. And what he said to me, and I believe what he stated in the meeting, or what he actually didn't say to me, because he said he didn't feel like he needed to, that he's comfortable with what has been proposed by staff at this point. So he doesn't feel the need to table it or hold it for the purposes of Winterville. And I just want that out there for everybody to know that, because we did have about a two-hour meeting that I sat in on with a number of people this afternoon, including Commissioner Dickerson, Commissioner Neesmith, and Mayor Farrell was there.
He may have changed his mind since I talked to him yesterday.
Well, I think we got a lot of clarification in that meeting. So I just wanted to lay that out there. I'm not trying to say vote for it, don't vote for it, but I just wanted to make sure that was clear. I don't know who was first. I think maybe Ms. Neesmith, and I'll come back to you. Ms. Neesmith?
Well, I'm going to second Melissa's motion, and here's the reason that I'm concerned about it. And when I read the ballot, on the referendum for the 2011 Rails to Trails, it says, "The Rails to Trails Network will provide for the capital improvements to complete the approved development of the Rails to Trails Network between East Broad Street and Old Winterville Road, and initiate development of the Rails to Trails Network between Old Winterville Road and the city of Winterville." So this referendum doesn't include the city of Winterville. It includes building to the city of Winterville. So I'm wondering if we're outside the bounds here in trying to call this a Spelost project, when it's clear to me that that's not what the citizens voted for. Bill, have you looked at this?
Yes, I have taken a look at that. And I have a different way of looking at that language. When I read these Spelost ballot statements, actually, this is not what was on the ballot. This was the project statement that was in the agenda report that was approved by the mayor and commission. They're generally read broadly, and so I think that's the way you've got to interpret it. But when it says between Old Winterville Road and the city of Winterville, I mean, when you think about transportation projects, like the rail line, the proposed passenger rail line between Athens and Atlanta, you think about it going from Athens to Atlanta, not from the city limits lines to the city limits lines outside of there. So just reading the language itself, to me, indicates support for taking it into, and it's a network, so it takes it into the city of Winterville. But even if you, even if there's a suggestion that that's not sufficient language, the Georgia Supreme Court has had several cases where they've dealt with this issue. And basically, they say that local governments have legislative discretion in looking at these issues, and they will only disapprove a project if it's entirely different from the project that's been proposed to the voters. So, I mean, mayor and commission here certainly have their legislative discretion in deciding what they want to do. But to me, this is not, by approving it, it is legal, it is within the bounds of this statement and law in general.
Well, that's all well and good. I'm more concerned about what people thought they were voting for. And to me, it's clear that this is "to the city of Winterville," between Old Winterville Road and the city of Winterville. That's what it says. So I'm going to stick to that.
Okay. Any further discussion before we vote?
Could the chair of the committee have a word, please?
I thought you were still out of the country.
Sometimes I wish I would.
And so do we.
I'm sure there are many that would feel the same way. I just wanted to say a few things. We are here, the option in front of us at the moment in the agenda report is to do two things. One is to approve, excuse me, is to approve the Subproject Number Three, and the second is to give our staff authority to work with the Firefly Trail Incorporated people and the Athens Land Trust to help us to acquire some of the land that will be necessary to make this project a complete project, and it will eventually link Athens to Union Point. I think that this has been done in a clear manner. I think that the issue of the trail over, through Dudley Park, or the trestle, excuse me, the at-grade connection through Dudley Park is important, but I think it is a separate issue from what we are discussing this evening. We will have an at-grade crossing through that park at some point, but I think that the, what we need to do at the moment is to formalize the agreement, or have our staff work on formalizing an agreement with some of our partners to help us tie up the dirt. Because if you can't tie up the dirt between here and Winterville, then that makes the whole project much, much more difficult. And I think that, from what our mayor has said, that the mayor of Winterville seems to be comfortable with the language here, and I don't see any purpose will be served by delaying this for a month. So I'm going to make a substitute motion that the mayor and commission approve Option One, A and B.
Second.
I believe that was you. Okay, I think Ms. Dickerson was the second. So we have a substitute motion on the floor. Now, is there any further discussion on substitute motion? If not, we will, will you call the roll and substitute, Mr. Bradlin?
Harret?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Link?
No.
Wright?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Neesmith?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Vale?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no.
Okay, so the substitute has passed, so the original was moot. So we're going to item number 16, which is appointments to boards and authorities.
May I move for suspension rules?
Thank you. You have a second on suspension rules?
I have a second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Well, we have a motion from the nominating committee for members of several boards and commissions. And I'm going to tell you all what those are, and then we will vote on them. Athens Downtown Authority, we have two two-year terms coming up that will expire 7/31/18. Regina Quick and Shane Jordan are the two nominees for those. The Department of Family and Children's Services Board, we have several. Kizzy Wingfield for a partial term, which ends 6/30/19. Emily Coleman for a five-year term ending 6/30/21. Jane Okrasinski for a five-year term ending 6/30/21. And Jeff Bishop for a three-year term expiring, oh, excuse me, went too far. That's the Department of Family and Children's Services. Historic Preservation, Jeff Bishop for a three-year term expiring 6/30/19. Regional Two Health, Mental Health Development, Disabilities and Addictive Diseases, Regional Planning Board. Kelly Ogansaya for a three-year term ending 6/30/19. Our Vision Committee, we have four. Mike Hodges, three-year term expiring 6/30/19. Matrice Jordan, three-year term expiring 6/30/19. Tony Milan, six-year term, excuse me, three-year term expiring 6/30/19. And Peter Norris, a three-year term expiring 6/30/19. And these are the nominees from the nominating committee.
May I move for approval of the recommendation coming from the nominating committee?
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And congratulations and thank you to these folks that are willing to serve. And for those who applied and didn't get appointed this time, we hope you'll keep coming back because we had some awesome people. We just didn't have enough spots for all of them. So thank you very much. We will now go to our public hearing deliberation for recommendations from the Clark County Planning Commission. And we do those, one item at a time. We have our public hearing, citizens' comments, then we come behind the rail for discussion action, and then go to the next one. We have two items. The first of those items is item number 17, which is a request from Brian Clark. And I'll tell you that we also have options for five-minute presentations, but those have to be signed up for one instance. So on item number 17, the request from Brian Clark and Excalibur Development for the rezoning of, from commercial rural to commercial general of 77.34 acres, known as 90925 Highway 29. Proposed use is commercial retail. And Mr. Deloche has that five-minute timeframe there. Excuse me, 10 minutes, 10 minutes. Cut you in half.
Thank you, Mayor Denson. Hopefully, I won't need all 10. But I do appreciate it, Mayor Denson and commissioners. I'm Jeff Deloche. I represent the landowner with this rezoning. I live at 1571 Crystal Hills Drive. I'm a lawyer, so I can't help. I got to get the legal stuff out of the way. We submitted a letter, but then the zoning changed just as a matter of law. I have to state, we do believe that a denial of this rezoning would violate our client's constitutional rights, both state and federal. Got that out of the way. Now, what I want to do is commend Commissioner Gertz and the planning staff for its work with this landowner. We've worked hard to try to bring forth a very responsible and practical way to go about this rezoning. And Mr. Griffin and his staff was very helpful with that, and certainly Mr. Gertz, Commissioner Gertz as well, has been great. What you will have before you is a commission-defined option that Commissioner Gertz and my client and Mr. Griffin have worked on in his absence. Commissioner Hamby's, I believe, going to be kind enough to present that. What you have is this rezoning of a little over 77 acres that's on either side of US Highway 29 North. It is compatible with future development map. It was passed eight to one by the planning commission with some conditions. Those conditions are what have been slightly modified by the commission-defined option. And we are in favor of all of those as they are stated in that commission-defined option. I think, again, this, and I have one little aerial, just because photographs helped me, and it wasn't in your packets. I'm going to show that in just a minute. But this is right next to the new Kroger out on US Highway 29. And I think we're all real proud of that facility and are encouraged by that kind of development in that area. And we hope and expect that this rezoning will allow that kind of development to continue in that location, which is real important for both the people that live in that area and just the overall development, economic development for the county in that area. This rezoning is a straight rezoning, but the conditions are there to protect and ensure that proper land use will occur. And the reason it's done that way is the future use is not defined, is not known exactly. So this gives a little flexibility to the developer while also assuring that the things that matter to the public, and actually matter to this developer as well, are protected. It is, it will protect the transportation corridor, which is important, which proposes a future connection between Voiles and Danielsville Road. That's provided for by 80-foot public right-of-way. And then the other thing that is a change from what the planning commission voted for, but I think we're all, the commission-defined option protects, this is an aerial, and so the property we've got, here's our Kroger, the property is here and on this side. You don't get a whole view of it. But what's helpful to see is there's currently two curb cuts, right in, right out. And what the developer has proposed, and what the commission-defined option does, is eliminate these two and make it one, and just make a matching one on the other side. And what you will have is a little over 1,000 feet on either side of the road between the major entrances, and then right-in, right-out only in the middle there by this commission-defined option, which, and that right-in, right-out is very important for office and retail development of this section, with having at least somewhere people can turn in that they don't have to travel 1,000 feet to get to those. So we appreciate the modification to allow that, that condition. The other is just a matter of interconnection. And my client is certainly in favor of interconnection. We recognize it's beneficial both to developer and to the public, and appreciate that Commissioner Gertz and the planning staff, and I think maybe the attorney's office as well, worked on making sure that the language just makes it clear that the timing of the interconnection will correlate with the development of the specific segments of this tract of land. And that was just because he doesn't know exactly how the development will progress, and just wanted it to be clear that those interconnections will be provided for at the time those areas were developed. Other than that, again, we just appreciate the way that everyone has worked together to put forth an option with the commission-defined option that we believe is both helpful to business and the economic development for this area, and certainly also takes into account all the public considerations. The last thing I'll say, and I think this was clear, but the right-in, right-out turns are, well exceed what DOT requires as far as spacing of those between the two interconnections. It's approximately 500 feet on either side from those, whereas the current speed limit, DOT would require 350 feet. So that's the only other thing that I just sort of wanted to mention and highlight. So I'm going to sit down by simply requesting your favorable consideration of the commission-defined option. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Deloche. Does anyone else wish to speak to this item before we come behind the rail? Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rail. And will you go ahead and read the ordinance so we don't miss it?
Yes, I will. Thank you. An ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia with respect to rezoning the parcel of land located at 900 US Highway 29 North from CR Commercial Rural to CG Commercial General, and part of the parcel of land at 925 US Highway 29 North from CR Commercial Rural to CG Commercial General, and for other purposes.
Thank you. And I believe in Mr. Gertz's absence, you're going to handle this for him, Mr. Hamby?
Yes, and I'm not sure Commissioner Gertz realized what he was asking for when he asked me to carry the water on this, but I'll try my best to not disappoint. And Mr. Deloche laid out a lot of what's in the commission-defined option at this point in time, but I'd just highlight that this allows for planning staff, planning staff to accommodate the connectivity with regards to the 200-feet distance when the road gets built through there. It also allows for more accessibility to the projects that still adhere to GDOT standards. And it's very important to make sure we're not just willy-nilly allowing curb cuts in there. These certainly will apply to the GDOT standards and such as that. And it also allows for whatever transportation components or the connectivity within the project itself, and the connectivity to the, to other parts of our transportation system, to be built at the time when the development is being built, which just, you know, kind of makes sense and saves a lot of time and effort on part of the developer and a part of our staff too, to make sure that things are being here too, as the ball gets rolling with that. I would like to say, in larger context of this project, and I'm fully supportive of it, I think it's a good project and a good use of the land around there. And it certainly is creating for our community another shopping mode, another commercial node, rather. Certainly, we have the east side, the cool east side, as Commissioner Dickerson and Harret always talk about. Five points downtown, the Athens West Corridor, the most, the coolest of them all. So, and this adds another element to that that's only going to be helpful to this community. So with that said, and to the residents out in this area as well, that's very important to keep in mind as well. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we approve the commission-friendly option as presented by Commissioner Gertz. Commissioner Gertz did work hard on this and wanted to make sure that it went well, and he's out of town. But I hope you'll support it, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
I believe Mr. Neesmith was the second. We have a motion, seconding for discussion.
Just a matter of format. I don't know if you noticed, on page 81, item two and three are the exact same. They're not, there's no difference. Twenty-two, I think it was just an error when he was probably cutting and pasting or whatever. So just to bring that everybody's attention. I don't think it's, I read it three times. I don't think there's any difference. It's the exact same, so.
Commissioner Gertz wrote that. I don't have anything to do, I don't make mistakes like that.
It's your fault.
Ms. Harret?
I believe at this time, a comment from President Kennedy is appropriate, given Commissioner Hamby's last comment, which is that success has a thousand fathers, but failure is an orphan. I do have, I intend to support this, but I do have a question. So it says on page 86 of the PDF under proposed development, it says the two subject rezoning areas are not proposed to be divided to create individual development lots on either side of the highway at this time. And so my question is, at some future point, would they be able to go ahead and do that by right? And, or would it have to come in front of us? And is there, do you see any issues with those two areas potentially being subdivided? And is there, do you see any issues with those two areas potentially being subdivided at some point in the future? I guess this is for Brad.
And I guess let me ask you to repeat the specific language you used.
So it's on page 86 of the PDF, and it says, under where it says proposed development, the second sentence, or the first sentence says, "The submitted plan is a non-binding conceptual site plan since the acreage-specific uses and design of potential individual developments have yet to be determined. The two subject rezoning areas are not proposed to be divided to create individual development lots on either side of the highway at this time."
Yes, I mean, they could come back by right and submit subdivision plans at some point in the future with the property rezoned under the commercial general criteria. Just at this point, and I think part of this, it's almost, when this rezoning originally came in, the first round with us was only to rezone the frontage of both sides that consist of the out parcels and the access, and I don't know that at this particular time he has immediate plans to create the four lots on either side. The biggest thing is to get the zoning in place and start getting dirt moving. But with it being a non-binding plan, they could submit subdivision plans in performance or just restricted their access.
I guess my question, maybe I'm just not understanding something, but the commission-defined option limits a right-in, a right-out on one on each side of the highways, is that correct?
One right-in, a right-out on each side, and then the full access point at the median break, which is the furthest north along Highway 29.
And the goal is to stop a whole bunch of curb cuts?
Yes.
So my question is, if this were subdivided at some point in the future, by right, each subdivided piece of property would be entitled to a curb cut, is that correct?
No.
No?
I think the conditions protect us on that, too. It limits us to one right-in, right-out along the entire frontage on both sides of Highway 29, and then the one full access.
Okay, so if at some, I hate to plog a dead horse here, but at some future point, if they were to come back and divide this into multiple lots, they would still have to only have one point of exit and egress and entrance, is that correct?
One right-in, a right-out, and one full access on each side without returning to this body to amend the condition of the rezoning.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Neesmith.
Mr. Dickerson, 2 says east side of the highway.
I stand corrected.
3 says west.
So you did find a difference. So any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. We are now at item number 18, I believe, and we didn't have anybody sign up for the 10-minute time, but this is a time for public input on this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is John Williams from Williams &amp; Associates. I'm representing the FICAP House Corporation in special use request before you tonight. The subject property is a 6.65-acre tract adjacent to the Oconee River located in the Carriage Lane. The fraternity and the House Corporation are very much excited to be a part of the new Greenway connection for Carriage Lane and to be dedicating land for those connections. The new trail will mean that the fraternity house is less, located less than one mile from South Campus and Ramsey Center by bike along that trail. And I might add that there's probably another 3,000 households out in that area, 3,000 beds out in that area that could potentially use this trail as connectivity and pedestrian connectivity for, you know, in lieu of traffic and traffic along Barnett Shoals Road and Lexington Road. For this particular project, we've conserved over 2.7 acres of forest canopy. We're well outside of the 100-foot riparian buffer of the river with no grading with encroaching in there. The current zoning is RM1. The property is a remnant tract, if you've been out that way, from the Woodlands project that we developed with a local developer here in town probably about 10 years ago, 12 years ago. And currently, I think as staff noted, there are 30 available beds that could be built on this property without any restriction. So it could be 31-bedroom units in a three-story building, or it could be 35, or six five-bedroom units in a two-story cottage. I think what's important about that is today, without any restrictions, there wouldn't necessarily have to be any consideration given to the location of the Greenway as we've worked with staff to do that. I've worked with Derek Doster personally, had two meetings with him to make sure we had it in the right location and it could be graded appropriately as our project's being developed. And there also wouldn't be any restrictions on where these units could potentially go on the site. And I don't know if you've been there or been out there or looked at the topography, but the flattest area of the site is the area adjacent to the cemetery, and that would more than likely be where anybody would develop the property would put the density because that's the easiest place to put it. Currently, we believe we have a much better option with the fraternity house. The house itself is located over 115 feet from the property line in cemetery. The fraternity will have oversight from both, from the National Chapter, the local House Corporation, and the university. And the addition of the buffering recommended by the Planning Commission, we believe, was an excellent idea. As the cemetery is over 10-foot up a hill, vertical elevation change from the fraternity house itself, and by placing this buffer up a portion of that hill, it will not only provide an adequate visual screen, but will also be a physical barrier between the two sides. Additionally, this plan will be a binding plan that will assure the neighbors that if this property is developed for a fraternity house, what they see on the piece of paper is exactly what they're gonna get. A little bit about the fraternity itself, it's around 40 members. Consequently, there are only 21 beds in the proposed house, which are less beds than could exist on the site today as a multifamily zoning. The house itself, while it may be 8,000 square feet, we've utilized the existing topography to be able to integrate a basement situation where the social functions will be held. Am I out of time, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, but if you've got some pertinent things, I will bear with you a minute.
The only other thing I'll add is that, the very, two things, the various, the cemetery is currently adjacent to a 700-bed apartment project, and I don't know that there's been any issues there. And then lastly, staff concurred with us in the reduction of the various requests from the parking from 77 spaces to 58 spaces, and we believe that is in the best interest of the project because there's just no need to put those additional spaces, that additional impervious surface coverage down by the river. So we'd appreciate your support, and I apologize for running over my time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rail, and this is Ms. Wright's.
Not everybody welcomes a new fraternity in their district, but this moves off of Milletge Avenue, I did learn that since we last met, and I have not heard any complaints. I think that this does fit in with the, you can see on one of the maps how dense the multifamily housing is. There's, it's not just all student residential over in that area as well, and so I move that we approve this as recommended from the Planning Department, Planning Commission.
Have a motion. Who's the second? Jerry? Jerry Nicholson? Okay, we have any further discussion behind the rail? I believe Andy raised his hand versus tonight.
I was just gonna say, I mean, I think in terms of the design and everything, it's a fine, I think that the proposer has done a lot to improve the project, but I intend to vote against this simply because I don't think fraternity houses need to be outside the loop.
Mr. Neesmith.
Yes, I'm gonna ask a question that Brad probably can't answer, but I'll ask it. Is there any idea when we're gonna put that street in that connects Carriage Lane to Bailey Street? I assume it's to Bailey Street that will be connected.
To Bailey Street was the proposed future interconnection, but I do not know.
So we've got that on our future maps, but we don't have any plans to do that.
Correct.
Which, by the way, could have an impact on Greenway.
And both the right-of-way for the connection and the Greenway are shown on this plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bearman, will you read the ordinance before we go further so I don't miss you?
Yes, an ordinance to amend the code of Athens, Clark County, Georgia with respect to special use approval in the RM1 mixed-density residential district on an approximate 6.65-acre tract of land comprised of two parcels of land located at 175 Carriage Lane and 250 Carriage Lane and for other purposes.
Thank you. Ms. Link.
There's been some concerns from the Neely family about the, this project being built adjacent to their family cemetery. Does this impede access to that cemetery in any way? Is, no?
No.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Do I need to read more formally the four different points in here for my motion, or is it, did I say it okay?
I think you're fine.
We should vote on the variance request as the first vote, and then the-
Yeah, we'll have two votes.
Special use request is the second.
Okay, so I move that we go with staff's recommendation on the requested variance.
Yes, Ms. Neesmith, you want?
Yes, that's good. Thank you.
Have a motion second. All in favor of approval of the variances proposed?
Aye.
And then I move that we did go with staff's recommendation on special use.
Should I keep going with the other two, or is the rest of it just complaining?
No, you can just vote to approve the special use as recommended by the Planning Commission.
I make that motion.
I second.
First half recommendation and special use.
I have a second for Mr. Neesmith. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Oh, you opposed, I'm sorry. Should've done a roll call, Andy, I'm sorry. Okay, we are finished with our planning items, and this is the time that anyone that's visiting with us tonight that would like to speak to anything that was not on tonight's agenda, we would love to hear from you. Anybody want to speak to us? I think this is a first.
Record.
Okay. So we'll come behind the rail now for our reports, and the first report is from the mayor. And one of the things I would like to do is pass a compliment, several compliments along our, to Athens Downtown Development Authority for the, really, and Pam Thompson for the really wonderful job. They did a making sure we had fireworks in a very short timeframe. It was a project they didn't seek out, it sort of got dumped on them. Our ACC staff, we had, from our internal staff to our police department, sheriff's office, everybody, leisure services, I start naming, I'm gonna miss somebody, but we, there was a lot of hands and a lot of work involved in that, and it was one of the nicest events that we've had in a long time. I absolutely loved it, and I think the public did, too. And I have one committee appointment I'd like to make, and this is to review our special events, ordinance, and processes, and I'm gonna put that in government ops tonight, too, because things sometimes don't fit perfectly in either one of the committees, but I think that's the one with the least workload right now. And so, who is chairing this? Is that, that's Andy, okay.
Unfortunately, Commissioner Harriet.
You shouldn't go out of town because you come back and have a lot of work, Andy. And that's all I have tonight. Mr. Williams, do you have anything?
Yes, I just want to note the operating transfer that is a part of your agenda packet, and we felt necessary to do that based on costs associated with the court-appointed contingent of defense running higher than they should this current fiscal, or the past fiscal year FY16, which ended June 30.
Mr. Bearman?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Maddox?
No, ma'am.
Okay, well, we will start, go to our commissioners, and we'll start with you, Ms. Wright, and end with Mr. Bailey.
I appreciate the fireworks, like you did. It was a great event, and I hope we can do it every year, actually, and I am glad that you assigned to committee to review and make sure that our processes for having special events is smooth and affordable. And then I had sent an email out that I was trying to capture what appeared to be from our SPOS report, some funds, they were categorized as unallocated in 2005 and earned interest from 2011, and I was just hoping that we could move forward, either have a work session or a summary of what's lingering. I did see that staff does plan to come forward for the $35,000 that's left over in 2,000 SPOS to finalize and close up that account, but there's, by the way, I read some good money that maybe we could start appropriating for all the things that we talked about we want to do and wondering where the money's coming from, so maybe we could have a work session to learn about that in the upcoming year.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Ms. Link?
I just wanted to bring up that, you know, we just approved this fraternity house right near the Greenway, and I want to commend the developer for acknowledging the Greenway and placing that house and acknowledging that, you know, that, you know, there'll be access to the Greenway, and I hope that we can start taking a bigger look as our Greenway and our Firefly Trail move forward at our surrounding land use policies. You know, we're gonna be attracting development to those areas, and we want to make sure it's the most appropriate development. We've already seen some very inappropriate development on our Greenway and along our Firefly Trail with some, you know, large retaining walls and, so I'm hoping that we can, as we move forward, especially with our comprehensive land use plan, that we can take a really close look at the land uses along these trails and make sure that we set some design and use guidelines that attract the right kind of development and also protect the folks who live in the neighborhoods that those trails go through, protect the affordable housing in those neighborhoods, and then make sure that people aren't being pushed out along the way. So, thanks.
Thank you.
I have nothing.
Just a couple of acknowledgements. Everybody knows we're losing, well, we're losing, we're, there are two additional employees we're losing or retiring, Carter Green and Gail Schrader. I think both of them officially are, I guess, Gail's official last day was last week, but her, her retirement day is August, but her last day was last week, and Carter's is sometime later this month, so, and I worked with both of them, and I think they, although it's great that they're retiring and they offered a lot to this community, I think they gave, gave their all in whatever they were tasked with doing along the way, and like I said, I worked with both of them, and I always found them very highly professional and very highly regarded in the community. So we'll miss them, but understand life goes on. So the only other thing I'll mention is I had a constituent contact me recently about something that, we don't often hear really good stuff sometimes about our police officers, and I wanted to share that. A constituent, actually a good friend of mine, was, had, his wife was in a car accident and had the grandchildren in the car, and the granddaughter, they, both grandson and granddaughter were removed from the car. It was out near Lowe's on Lexington Road last week, and the granddaughter had been in a previous fender bender with the parent and was really freaking out beside herself, and the officer went to his car and got a teddy bear and brought it to her, and now she carries it with her everywhere, but it did the trick, it calmed her down, and I just thought that's awesome. I just thought that was something we should, you know, certainly highlight and applaud, so wanted to share that with y'all. That's all.
And I think a lot of that happens, we just don't hear about it publicly. Mr. Harriet.
Just a couple of very brief things. I would like to follow up on what Commissioner Dickerson said about our retiring police officer, Carter Green and Gail Schrader from our Board of Elections. I think they've both given the citizens of this community great service over the year and will be missed, but I wish them both well in their retirement and future endeavors. And then I would also like to say, although I missed it personally, I know that the mayor and some other commissioners were at the Green Acres Fourth of July Parade, which is, I believe, one of the longest Fourth of July parades anywhere in the community, if not the longest, so that's always good fun, and I hope you all enjoyed coming over to the Cool East Side.
Well, I could go to if every community did one, but it's a fantastic thing to do on Fourth of July. Ms. Bell?
It was sweet. Brought back a lot of memories of what used to be. It's nice to see that in the community. I want to also reaffirm about the people that have worked for us. The police chief, he was interim, did such a wonderful job, and of course, Gail Schrader has been a part of my life since becoming a commissioner, but I would miss her very much, and I wish her well. I also want to tag on to Commissioner Wright's statements about the fireworks Friday night. I walked up to Washington Street, and of course, Mike and some of the others, Kelly were there in the area, and I really had tears in my eyes when I saw the crowds of people. It was so wonderful to see the different blends of people with their children. There was one lady that had a big old shirt on that said Banks County, so she had come from afar, but it was just so neat to see the all-inclusive mindset that was there, and the fireworks were just awesome, the fellowship and all was great, and yes, I hope we will continue to be able to have it. It was wonderful. Thank you.
Ms. Hamby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and it was a, it really was an honor to be in the Green Acres Parade, it always is, and it's good to have Commissioner Harriet back. I thought for a while there that he was, he would go along with the, or be part of the Brexit vote, so, so my hopes were dashed, my hopes were dashed when I saw him here tonight. So at any rate, maybe we'll vote again. And I thought about a teddy bear, so maybe we should bring one of those just to have handy in case. Sorry, Commissioner Harriet, haven't seen you in a while, so it's good to get back.
Get your jab.
The fireworks were a really good event, and certainly appreciate the Downtown Development Authority, and certainly appreciate what staff did. They, I know, I know the mayor and some others were on them all the time during that week going, what's going on? So it's very much appreciated, and I think people did have a good time and enjoyed themselves. And I think what this does highlight, though, is a, is a good partnership between, between the government, between the University of Georgia, who played a big role in helping us with this as well, and also our major sponsors, our private sponsors. Blasakane Birch, Gerard and Ashley were one of the presenting sponsors, as well as Landmark. And then we also had Allgood, First American Bank, Bank of North Georgia, and of course, Terrapin Brewery, who helped with the festivities quite a bit. So those private partners are real good, and it's a good partnership to have in doing a community event like this. It truly does make it a community event when you have the government working with the university and private partners like this. And I think also what this, as much as the hard work that went into it, and I'm glad you've put this into, this special events permitting process into government glad you've put this into, this special events permitting process into, into government ops, simply because I think it will afford us an opportunity to look and, look and see how we can create more special events, not only for downtown, but for the Cool East Side or for Athens West Corridor, because everybody in, whether you're in our community or not, would have to get a special use permit, so it's not, it doesn't just apply to downtown, it applies to all over Five Points, as another example. So, so I think it's, I think having a look at that and seeing what other communities do and compare it, and seeing what we can do to make it a little bit easier and, and be able to move quick like we did last time, I think that was a good, a good lesson and a good lessons learned from that, so I appreciate that. The final thing I would like to do is to thank Kevin Gentry from our Stormwater. I know he's been working with a constituent of mine over in Briar Cliff, working with a flooding issue, but he's been, the constituent can have nicer things to say about Kevin and the help that he's given, so you think about the quiet things our staff does in helping the constituents that we represent, and that's, it's good to know that that's happening, so, thank you.
Ms. Neesmith.
Thank you. Thanks to Commissioner Hamby's generosity and not wanting to make a welcoming speech, I was able to make a welcoming speech to the Southeastern Chamber of Commerce Institute, which is about 250 20s and 30-something things who come here every year and have for 63 years for training as Chamber of Commerce employees and volunteers, and to imagine that these people have been here 63 times, and to see these bright, these bright young talents was just incredible, it's just, it was a lot of fun, Mike, you really don't want to do that again.
And I imagine after you gave the welcoming, that there won't be a 64th.
You could be right, you could be right. I also want to, that was me. That's it. Kudos to code enforcement, once again, they've come to rescue of a couple of my constituents very, very rapidly with some issues that they have, I won't go into, but to them, these were incredibly important things, and they were out there within 24 hours and the problems were solved, so as usual, our staff is pretty incredible, so, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Badi, you want to wind us up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only thing I'd like to do is move that we adjourn.
And don't get ready to leave, because we have a session. So we'll need to ask our visitors to, on favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Does anybody need a quick break, or y'all?